Welcome to the Deep Dive. I'm your host, and today we're taking a truly focused plunge into a topic that's crucial for your next big step. The California Real Estate Sales License Test. Now, this isn't just some generic study session you can find anywhere.
Right.
We've actually looked at common areas where learners, maybe like you, often hit hurdles on practice tests. And we're going to use that insight to really custom tailor this deep dive. We'll zero in on those tricky concepts, hopefully turn them into clear aha moments for you.
That's exactly right. Our mission today really is to cut through all the jargon, you know, simplify those complex ideas, and arm you with the core knowledge, maybe even some surprising facts, that you need not just to pass the test, but to really understand the material.
Yeah.
Because when you get the why behind these rules, the what becomes so much clearer. And honestly, it sticks better. It's about building a solid foundation, not just memorizing facts.
Absolutely. We'll unpack key areas, especially those nuanced concepts that tend to trip up test takers.
Yep.
We want to make sure you feel ready, ready to ace that exam and step confidently into the California real estate world. So, let's get into it. Hashtag tag of row. The Landscape of Real Estate Regulation and Professional Conduct. Okay, to kick us off, let's unpack the real foundational purpose of California's real estate license law. At its absolute core, what's it trying to achieve?
Okay, so the main thing really is protecting consumers, protecting the public. You know, the law does talk about disciplinary actions, sure, but that's, that's really just a tool, right?
It means to an end.
Exactly, it means to an end. The ultimate goal, the whole reason it exists, is safeguarding the public from, you know, unethical or maybe incompetent practices in real estate deals. It's all about ensuring trust, reliability, especially when you're talking about such significant financial decisions.
And who exactly is at the helm then? Who runs this department, making sure consumer protection stays front and center? Who's steering the ship?
That would be the Real Estate Commissioner. This person is the Chief Executive Officer of the Department of Real Estate, the DRE. And they're actually appointed by the Governor of California. Their main job is creating and enforcing the policies that ensure that public protection happens. They also play a really critical role conducting formal hearings. For current licensees, yes, but also for people applying for a license.
And those hearings can have real teeth, right?
Oh, absolutely. Big outcomes, license restriction, suspension, even outright denial or revocation, serious stuff.
So, given that broad mandate for protection, who exactly needs a license to practice real estate in California? It feels like it could cover a lot of ground.
It is, it's definitely broad. Essentially, anyone performing specific real estate acts, and this is key, with the expectation of compensation, needs a license.
Expectation of compensation.
Right, and this covers a really wide range of things. Selling, offering to sell, purchasing, offering to purchase, listing property for others, negotiating exchanges, leasing, renting, even just collecting rent for someone else. Yeah, seeking prospective sellers, buyers, or tenants, helping someone fill out an application for state or federal land, or even dealing with loans secured by lenins, seeking payments, negotiating them, collecting them, or selling, buying, exchanging those real estate sales contracts secured by lenins. The core idea is, if you're getting paid to help someone else with their real estate transaction, you almost certainly need that license.
That makes sense. It ties back to that professional accountability when money's involved. Are there any significant exceptions to this rule? Who doesn't need a license? And why are those distinctions important for someone taking the test?
Yes, definitely. There are several important exceptions, and yeah, for the exam, it's good to focus on the most common ones. Generally, you don't need a license if you're selling, buying, or leasing property strictly on your own behalf.
Your own property.
Your own property, key distinction. But there's a little catch there. If you start dealing with, say, eight or more real estate sales contracts annually, even for yourself, that might cross the line into needing a license, because it starts looking more like a business activity than just personal dealings. Other common exceptions, people acting under a power of attorney from the actual property owner, or licensed attorneys acting in their legal capacity for a client.
Okay.
Also, folks acting under court order, like a receiver, trustee, administrator, executor, guardian, they're exempt. And for property managers, there's the resident manager exception, if you live on site.
Right, the person who lives there.
Exactly, and your duties are pretty limited supervision, showing units, accepting pre-printed applications, giving out basic lease info, accepting signed agreements, collecting rent and security deposits. If it's mostly administrative stuff tied to living there, you're usually exempt.
And the why behind these?
Usually, it's because there's some other framework providing oversight, like, you know, direct ownership, a court order, or another professional license, like being an attorney.
Gotcha. So, given the DRE's power and all these rules, what kind of behavior, what misconduct can really land a licensee in hot water?
Yeah.
What are the big red flags the DRE watches for?
Yeah, the DRE definitely looks at misconduct broadly. Common violations include really serious stuff, like dishonesty, that covers things like fraud, misrepresentation, making false promises, you know, saying a property has features it doesn't, or promising an outcome you can't actually deliver.
Like guaranteeing profit.
Exactly, or failing to make proper disclosures, acting in a way that's untrustworthy or incompetent, even selling property without the owner's explicit consent, big no-no. It all circles back to protecting the public. Also, things like accepting payment directly from someone who isn't your employing broker.
All right, has to go through the broker.
Always, or not putting a clear termination date in an exclusive listing agreement. That's a specific requirement. And definitely practicing law when you're not an attorney, like drafting complex legal clauses yourself instead of just filling in blanks on standard forms, that's a huge one. Unauthorized practice of law. Incorrect handling of client funds, which we'll talk more about. Violating fair housing laws. Improper record keeping, acting without a valid license, obviously. Or even having certain prior criminal convictions can be grounds for discipline.
And the consequences?
Yeah.
What can the DRE actually do?
They have a range of disciplinary actions. They can refuse to issue a license in the first place, they can restrict an existing license.
Meaning?
Meaning the licensee can still practice, but maybe only certain types of transactions or under stricter supervision.
Okay.
They can temporarily suspend the license. Or the most severe action is license revocation, that's permanent removal. They can also issue citations and fines, those can go up to $2,500 per investigation, depending on how serious the violation is.
Okay, this next point is really crucial, especially since it's a common area of confusion on tests.
Yeah.
How long does the DRE generally have to take action against a licensee? Is there a strict deadline, or is there some flexibility?
This is super critical for the exam, and yeah, it trips people up because of a Q exception. So, the general rule, the statute of limitations, is three years.
Three years from the act.
Three years from the date the licensee committed the act they're being disciplined for. So, if something happened today, they generally have three years from today to file formal charges. However, and this is the exception you absolutely need to burn into your brain.
Okay.
For misconduct involving fraud, misrepresentation, or false promises, the DRE can file formal charges within one year after the discovery of the issue by the person filing the complaint.
One year from discovery, even if it's past the three years?
Exactly, even if it's four or five years after the act itself. If the victim just discovered the fraud, the clock starts then, and the DRE has one year from that discovery date. So, if you see a test question suggesting it's always three years with no exceptions, that's wrong, because of that fraud clause. It really shows how seriously they take fraud.
That's a vital distinction, really highlights the DRE's focus on deception. Okay, let's shift gears slightly. Let's talk about how brokers manage their teams, and specifically, advertising another area where licensees can easily make mistakes. Hashtag tag tag B Broker Supervision and Advertising Regulations. Okay, let's talk about the hierarchy, the chain of command. If a broker's license gets suspended, what's the immediate impact on their salesperson's? This broker-salesperson relationship is key.
It's immediate and drastic. If an employing broker's license is suspended or revoked, the licenses of all their sponsored salespersons instantly become invalid.
Invalid, not just suspended, but invalid.
Invalid, because salespersons can only perform real estate acts under the direct authority and supervision of an active employing broker. Without that broker, their license has no standing. It's effectively suspended too, they just cannot operate independently, period. It underscores that dependency.
And who carries the ultimate responsibility for all the advertising that comes out of a brokerage? Doesn't matter who actually created the ad.
The responsible broker, no question. All advertising flyers, websites, social media posts, everything must be done under their direct supervision. They bear the final responsibility for making sure it's accurate, truthful, and complies with all DRE regulations. It really emphasizes the broker's critical supervisory role.
Which leads us right into blind ads. This concept seemed to cause some confusion for you on the practice test. What exactly is a blind ad, and why is it such a problem in California?
Okay, a blind ad is basically any advertisement where a license holder tries to promote real estate activity without clearly stating that they are a license holder. The key insight here, the reason that DRE cares so much, is transparency. It's absolutely illegal in California, because it can easily mislead the public.
How so, like an example?
Sure, let's say an agent is representing a seller, but they run an ad that just says "for sale by owner" with their phone number.
Ah, I see.
That's a classic blind ad. The public might think they're dealing directly with the owner, a private party, when really, a licensed professional is involved. It undermines trust, you know? And it can lead to serious discipline, even if the agent wasn't trying to be malicious, it's about maintaining professional integrity.
That makes total sense. Transparency is key for consumer protection.
So, what about online advertising specifically? We live online now. What are the rules, especially for social media?
Right, online, licensees absolutely must disclose their name, their license number, and the responsible broker's license name. If they're involved in loans, they're NMLS number two, if lookable. And crucially, for social media ads, think Facebook posts, Instagram stories promoting a listing, they must also include their license status, like Realtor or real estate agent. This ensures that even in that fast-paced digital world, consumers always know they're interacting with a licensed pro. Clear identification is paramount.
What if a broker wants to use a business name that's different from their own legal name? Can they just make one up? They definitely can use a fictitious business name, you know, a doing business as, or DBA. But, and this is important, it must be submitted to the DRE for approval first.
Okay.
There's actually no limit on how many DBAs a broker can get approved and use, as long as they follow the process for each one. Salespersons can also get DBAs, but they need their responsible broker's permission and DRE approval. And if a salesperson uses that DBA in advertising, the ad still has to include the salesperson's actual name, their license number, and the identity of their responsible broker. It always circles back to transparency and knowing who you're dealing with.
And real estate teams, they're everywhere now. But naming and advertising them compliantly seems tricky, how do they navigate that?
Yeah, teams have specific rules to avoid confusion. First, a team name has to include at least two licensees' names, well, the surname of at least one member, and it must use words like team, group, or associates. What's critically important is that team names cannot use terms like broker or brokerage, because that could mislead the public into thinking the team is an independent company, a separate licensed entity, which it isn't. They operate under a responsible broker.
Got it.
Interestingly, the terms realty and real estate are allowed in team names. And in their ads, they have to show the team name, the surname, and license number of at least one team member, and of course, the name of the responsible broker. It's all structured to provide clarity for the consumer while letting teams build their brand.
That's an excellent breakdown, super helpful. Let's shift gears now to maybe one of the most critical areas of professional conduct, and an area where your practice test showed a need for real clarity. The very strict rules around handling client funds. And this is a huge one on the exam, and you had a question about it.
Yeah.
When a property manager, or any licensee really, receives a security deposit or other client funds, what is the absolute must-follow rule for handling that money?
Security deposits, earnest money, rent collections, any funds received on behalf of others in a transaction must be deposited into a trust account.
A trust.
Yes, and this account must be totally separate from the broker's own business operating account or personal accounts, no mixing allowed. For earnest money specifically, the rule is super strict. Deposit it within three business days of receipt. Or, if you hold a check uncashed until an offer is accepted, then it's three business days from the acceptance of that offer. It's all about keeping client funds clearly segregated, identifiable, and safe. Think of it like sacred ground, it belongs to someone else, don't touch it, don't mix it.
Now, you faced a scenario in the practice test where funds were mixed with a personal account, but maybe without the actual intent to spend the client's money. What's that specific violation called, and why is it such a big deal?
That specific act is called co-mingling.
Co-mingling.
Exactly, it's the illegal act of simply mixing the broker's personal or business funds with a client's funds in the same account. And the crucial part here, the part that often trips people up, is that it's illegal regardless of whether there was any intent to actually spend or misuse the client's money.
So, just mixing is enough?
Just the mixing itself is the violation, it's not just a technicality. Co-mingling is seen as the first step down a very, very slippery slope. Even if you fully intend to keep track and not spend it, the act of mixing immediately breaks that clear separation, compromises the audit trail, and puts the client's money at risk. It's an ethical red line, big penalties, including license revocation.
And what if those co-mingled funds are actually spent, or used for something other than what the client intended?
Then it escalates to conversion. Conversion is the illegal act of actually appropriating or using client funds for purposes other than their intended use. It often follows co-mingling, right? Once the money's mixed, the temptation or opportunity to use it improperly is right there. Both co-mingling and conversion are extremely serious breaches of fiduciary duty. They really underscore why keeping client funds separate and untouched is absolutely paramount.
Okay, so the rule is strict separation. Are there any tiny exceptions, any situation where a broker's own money can legally be in that trust account? It sounds like almost never.
There are actually two very specific, very limited exceptions. And yeah, these are definitely worth remembering for the test. First, a broker can keep up to $200 of their own money in the trust account.
$200, why?
Specifically to cover bank service charges or checking account fees. Because you can't use the client's trust funds to pay those bank fees, right? So, this small cushion prevents the account from being overdrawn by fees.
Makes sense, and the second?
Second, income that the broker has earned, like commissions or fees that have cleared and rightfully belonged to the broker, can remain in the trust account for a short period, but no longer than 25 days from the date of deposit. After that 25-day window, those earned funds absolutely must be moved out into the broker's general operating account. These are super precise rules, really designed to minimize any co-mingling risk while still allowing for, you know, practical banking realities.
And how long do brokers need to hang on to these trust account records, and other transaction documents too?
All trust account records, just like all other transaction documents, contracts, escrow records, everything related to a deal, must be retained for a minimum of three years.
Three years from?
Three years from the closing date of the transaction. Or if the transaction didn't close, three years from the date of the listing. And yes, electronic record keeping is totally fine nowadays, but the broker has to make sure those records are secure, authentic, accurate, easily readable, and available for the DRE to inspect if needed. It's all about maintaining that clear, verifiable paper trail for accountability.
It really sounds like a system built for maximum clarity and accountability, which makes sense, given that consumer protection mandate. Okay, let's turn to another area that sometimes causes confusion, especially the wording on the exam, antitrust laws. Right, this is an area where your practice test showed some confusion. You seem to think antitrust laws prevented competition. Can you clarify what the actual goal of antitrust laws is? What do they prevent versus what do they promote?
Absolutely, and that's a really common misunderstanding. The main goal of antitrust laws, like the big one, the Sherman Antitrust Act, is actually to promote fair competition.
Promote it, not prevent it.
Exactly, promote fair competition, specifically on behalf of American consumers. They don't prevent competition, they do the opposite. They are specifically designed to prevent business practices that stifle or kill competition, things that lead to monopolies or unfair market advantages. So, think of it as ensuring a level playing field, where businesses compete fairly, which ideally leads to better prices, better services, and more choices for consumers.
Okay, so they don't stop competition, they stop anti-competitive practices, that's the key takeaway.
Precisely.
Can you give us some concrete examples of these illegal activities? The kinds of things real estate licensees absolutely need to avoid?
Definitely. There are a few main categories of antitrust violations to watch out for. First, price fixing. This is any effort, any agreement between competitors to jointly set a fixed rate, price, or commission.
Like all the brokers in town agreeing on a 6% commission.
Exactly that, that's illegal price fixing. Every brokerage has to set its own commission rates independently, no collusion allowed. Second, group boycotts. This is an agreement between two or more competitors not to do business with another specific competitor. Often, the goal is to force that competitor to change their business practices, maybe raise their prices, or even drive them out of business. The example from your practice test, broker Alma and Fred agreeing not to work with Tomas because he charges lower commissions, that's a textbook example of an illegal group boycott.
Got it.
Third, market allocation. This happens when competitors agree to divide up markets among themselves. Maybe by geographic area, you take the north side, I'll take the south side, or by type of client, specifically so they don't have to compete with each other, also illegal. And fourth, tie-in agreements, sometimes called tying arrangements. This is when you offer a desired product or service, but only on the condition that the buyer also agrees to purchase a second, often less desirable, product or service.
Like, I'll list your house, but only if you agree to use my brother's moving company.
Could be, or more commonly in real estate. I'll help you buy this house only if you agree to list your current house with me. That conditionality makes it a potential tie-in violation. All these practices undermine fair competition and are strictly prohibited, big trouble if caught.
These are absolutely critical to understand, not just for the exam, but for ethical practice day to day. Avoids huge problems down the road. Okay, let's move from market rules to the core of client interaction, agency relationships. All right, let's dive into agency. It's really the bedrock of how you represent people in real estate, legally, ethically. What's the fundamental difference between working for a client versus just working with a customer?
That difference is absolutely crucial, it defines your legal duties. When you work for a client, you've entered into an agency relationship, and that means you owe that client a whole set of specific, demanding fiduciary duties. You're acting in their absolute best interest, putting their needs ahead of everyone else's, including your own, almost like you're acting for yourself, but on their behalf.
Okay, fiduciary duties, that's the key for a client.
Right, now, when you work with a customer, there's no agency relationship established. You still owe them duties, of course, basic honesty, fair dealing, disclosure of material facts about the property, but not that full spectrum of fiduciary duties. You're essentially facilitating the transaction involving them, maybe representing the other party, but you're not their advocate. You're not representing their specific interests in the same way.
Speaking of those fiduciary duties, there are quite a few, and they're central to the exam. Is there a good way to remember them all? A mnemonic perhaps? And maybe which one you think is the most critical?
There is, a really common and helpful acronym is OLDCAR, O-L-D-C-A-R. It covers the core fiduciary duties owed to a client. O is for obedience. You must obey all of your client's lawful and ethical instructions. They're the boss, the decision-maker, as long as what they're asking is legal and ethical. L is for loyalty. This one is arguably the most important. You have to act solely in your client's best interest, always putting their needs above your own or anyone else's. Undivided loyalty. D is for disclosure. You must disclose all material facts that could benefit your client or affect the transaction. This absolutely includes the broker's duty in California to conduct that visual inspection of the seller's property and tell the buyer about any material defects found. It's about total transparency for your client. C is for confidentiality. Any private information your client shares with you must be kept confidential. And this duty is powerful, it lasts forever. Even years after the deal closes, you can't reveal their confidences.
Forever, wow.
Forever. A is for accounting, proper handling and record keeping of all funds and property belonging to the client. No co-mingling, as we discussed. This duty, like confidentiality, also lasts forever regarding funds handled. And R is for reasonable skill and care. You're expected to use your professional expertise, your knowledge, and diligence on your client's behalf. Basically, act competently.
OLDCAR, that's perfect, really breaks down those crucial obligations. Okay, now let's talk about the different types of agency relationships, and how they actually get created, and, just as importantly, how they end. Hashtag tag tag B, classifications, and creation of agency. You, our listener, seem to struggle a bit on the practice test with the scope of authority for different agent types. Could you clarify the differences between special, general, and universal agency? Maybe from the narrowest authority to the broadest, this seems like a common point of confusion.
You're absolutely right, it often is. So, let's lay it out clearly, from narrowest scope to broadest scope. First, special agency, this is the most limited type. It's the typical relationship between, say, a broker and a client who signs a listing agreement. The special agent has very narrowly defined authority, usually for a single, specific objective, like selling one particular property. Crucially, a special agent does not have the power to bind their principal to a contract. Their job is to find a buyer and bring offers to the principal for decision.
Okay, a very specific task.
Very specific. Next up is general agency. This is broader than special agency, but still limited overall. A general agent has a wider scope of authority, but it's usually confined to a specific area of the principal's affairs, and the relationship is often ongoing. The classic example here is the relationship between a broker and their sponsored associate licensees, the salespersons or broker associates working under them. The associate acts as a general agent for the broker and can bind the broker within the scope of their authorized activities. Most property managers are also general agents for the property owners they represent, handling a range of ongoing management tasks.
Wider scope, ongoing relationship, makes sense.
Right, and finally, universal agency. This is the broadest classification possible. A universal agent has full authority to act on behalf of the principal in all matters, business or personal. Think unlimited power.
Wow.
Yeah, it's very rare in real estate, because it grants such extensive power. You typically only see this created through a very comprehensive power of attorney document, giving the agent almost complete control over the principal's affairs.
That's super clear. So, in California real estate, how do these agency relationships typically get created? Is it just based on how people act, or does it need something more formal?
Well, theoretically, agency can be created in several ways. You could have implied agency, just through actions and conduct. Or, agency by ratification, where a principal approves an agent's unauthorized actions after the fact. Ostensible agency, where you lead a third party to believe someone is your agent. But, and this is the critical point for California real estate practice in the exam, the only acceptable and enforceable way to create agency is with a written agreement.
Written agreement, that's the rule.
That is the rule. The listing agreement for sellers, the buyer representation agreement for buyers, these written contracts are the primary tools. This requirement is all about consumer protection, clarity, and legal enforceability. No handshake deals for agency here.
And once you have that written agreement, how does the agency relationship end? What brings it to a close?
Agency can terminate in basically two main ways. First, by operation of law. These are circumstances that automatically end the agency, regardless of what the parties want.
Like what?
Like the expiration date and the agreement being reached.
Hmm.
Or the property being destroyed, maybe by fire or earthquake. The death or incapacity of either the principal or the agent, bankruptcy of either party. Or, if the whole purpose of the agency becomes legally impossible, maybe the zoning changes dramatically, these things just end it.
Okay, external events mostly.
Right, the second way is by the acts of the parties themselves. These are actions taken by the principal, the agent, or both. This could be mutual agreement, both sides decide to end it. Fulfillment of the purpose, the house sells and closes, mission accomplished. Renunciation by the agent, the agent says, "I quit." Revocation by the principal, the principal says, "You're fired," although they might still owe commission, depending on the contract. Or, a material breach of contract by either side.
Understanding how it starts and stops is definitely essential. Now, let's focus on a really critical element, disclosure. Especially when you get into a potentially complex situation like dual agency. Hashtag hashtag C, disclosure requirements, including dual agency. Disclosure timing, you mentioned it briefly, but let's nail it down. In California, when exactly must agency disclosure happen?
The rule in California is as soon as practicable.
As soon as practicable, what does that mean in reality?
In reality, it generally means before you provide any substantive real estate services. You need to disclose who you represent or might represent right at the beginning of any serious interaction with a potential client, or even an unrepresented party. It's all about transparency and getting informed consent right from the get-go. You don't want anyone feeling like they were misled about your role later on.
Are there specific forms used for this, to make sure the disclosure is clear and documented?
Yes, the California Association of Realtors, CAR, provides two key forms that its members use widely to meet these requirements. There's Form AD, which stands for Disclosure Regarding Real Estate Agency Relationship. This is typically given to unrepresented parties before you actually form an agency relationship with them. It clearly explains the different types of agency, seller's agent, buyer's agent, dual agent.
Okay, Form AD first.
Right, then there's Form AC, which is the confirmation of real estate agency relationships. This form is used later, typically as part of the purchase offer or counter offer, to confirm the specific agency relationship choices that the principal's buyer and seller have already made in that particular transaction. It formalizes who represents whom.
Got it, AD explains, AC confirms. Now, let's tackle dual agency. This is where one brokerage ends up representing both the buyer and the seller in the same deal. It involves something called limited loyalty, a concept you really need to grasp for the exam. What exactly does limited loyalty mean for the agent, and why is it such a big deal in dual agency?
Okay, dual agency means the agent, or more accurately, the brokerage firm, owes fiduciary duties to both clients simultaneously, the buyer and the seller. This inherently limits the duties owed to each party, even though they are still technically fiduciary duties. Think about it. How can you have undivided loyalty to two opposing sides? You can't.
Right, you can't fully advocate for both on price, for example.
Exactly, so what's given up, what's limited, is primarily full disclosure and undivided loyalty. A dual agent cannot disclose confidential information learned from one party to the other if it would harm their negotiating position, like telling the buyer the seller is desperate and will take less, or telling the seller the buyer is willing to pay much more. You have to stay neutral on those points. The law says dual agents still owe a fiduciary duty of utmost care, integrity, honesty, and loyalty in the dealings with either the seller or the buyer, but that loyalty is now shared, it's divided, and by necessity, it's limited, especially regarding price negotiation and motivation.
And the disclosure requirements for dual agency? It sounds like something that absolutely, positively needs to be upfront, clear, and agreed upon.
You are absolutely right, dual agency disclosure must be in writing, no exceptions. While the DRE itself doesn't mandate specific forms, those CRR forms we mentioned, Form AD and Form AC, are typically used by Realtors to fulfill this critical obligation. The agent must get informed written consent from both the buyer and the seller before acting as a dual agent. Failing to properly disclose dual agency and get that consent, huge consequences. You could lose your license, lose your commission for that deal, and face serious lawsuits from one or both clients. It's a very high-stakes area. Meticulous compliance is absolutely essential, because it directly impacts the trust and the balance of power. because it directly impacts the trust and the balance of power in the transaction.
That's a really thorough overview of agency. Okay, let's transition now from the relationships to the actual thing being bought and sold. The property itself? How it's classified, how it's owned, fundamental concepts for anyone entering real estate. Hashtag tag 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 three, property ownership and land use controls. Okay, a really foundational concept for the exam, and just for practice, is the difference between real property and personal property. Can you break down that distinction for us? Why does it matter so much in a real estate deal?
Absolutely. It's fundamental. Real property is basically the land itself, plus anything permanently attached to it, improvements like buildings, fences, roads, things that aren't natural. It also includes the bundle of rights that come with ownership. Think of it as immovable, part of the earth. It's conveyed using a deed or sometimes a will.
Okay, land and things stuck to it.
Right. Personal property, on the other hand, is also called chattel. This is basically everything else. It's movable, it's temporary, it's not permanently attached to the land. Think furniture, cars, lamps, appliances that aren't built-in. It's conveyed using a bill of sale or maybe a bequest in a will. And it generally goes with the seller when a property is sold, unless the contract specifically says otherwise. The distinction is critical because it defines exactly what the buyer is getting in the sale versus what the seller gets to take with them. Avoids disputes later.
What about things that seem natural but are, you know, planted or cultivated? Like crops or trees? Where do they fall?
That's a great clarifying question. We have two categories there. Fructus naturalis, think natural fruits. These are things like trees, shrubs, perennial plants that don't require annual cultivation. They're generally considered real property because they're seen as permanent parts of the land. But fructus industrialis, industrial fruits, or sometimes called emblems. These are annually cultivated crops. Think corn, wheat, vegetables. These are always considered personal property, even before they're harvested. And they typically belong to the tenant farmer who planted them, not necessarily the landowner. The key is that annual planting and intent to harvest.
Got it. So what happens when something was clearly personal property? Like a ceiling fan bought at the store, but then it gets installed? What's that called, and how do we know if it crossed the line?
Right. When personal property becomes attached to the real property in a permanent way, it becomes a fixture.
A fixture?
A fixture. It was personal, now it's real. The process of attaching it is called affixation or annexation, like installing that ceiling fan, or built-in bookshelves, or a new water heater. Once it's affixed, it's generally considered part of the real estate and stays with the property when sold, unless excluded in the contract. How do we tell if something is a fixture? Courts often use the MARIA test as a guideline. Method of attachment. How permanently is it attached? Would removing it cause damage? Adaptability. Is the item customized for this specific property? Like custom blinds. Relationship of the parties. Was it installed by a tenant or the owner? Different rules apply. Intent. What was the intention of the person who installed it? Did they mean for it to be permanent? This is often the most important factor. Agreement. What does the contract say? The written agreement between buyer and seller always overrides the other tests.
MARIA? Good one to remember. Now, trade fixtures seem different. They often look permanently installed, but they're treated differently, right? Especially in commercial deals.
Yes. Very different and super important for commercial leases. Trade fixtures are items installed by a business tenant specifically for their trade or business operations. Think display cases in a retail store, commercial ovens in a restaurant, specialized dental chairs in a dentist's office. Even if these items are bolted down or seem permanently attached, they are generally considered the tenant's personal property.
Even if attached?
Even if attached. The tenant usually has the right to remove them when the lease ends, provided they repair any damage caused by the removal. The key here is the purpose it facilitates the tenant's business, not the general use of the property. Lease agreements should always clearly spell out how trade fixtures will be handled to avoid fights later.
What's the opposite process? Taking something real and making it personal again?
That's severance. Severance is the act of converting real property back into personal property by detaching it.
Like cutting down a tree?
Exactly. Cutting down a tree severs it from the land, turning it into personal property timber or firewood. Removing a built-in cabinet would also be severance.
And finally, manufactured homes. Or mobile homes. Real or personal property? This feels like it could go either way.
It can be tricky. Manufactured homes are typically considered personal property initially because they're designed and built to be movable. They even have titles like cars. However, a manufactured home can become real property if it's permanently installed on an approved foundation system, meets certain state requirements, like removing the wheels and axle, and the title is properly surrendered. It effectively becomes an immobile part of the land. As a licensee, if you're selling a used mobile home, you can only sell it as real property if it's properly registered and legally affixed to that foundation. Otherwise, you might need a different type of license to sell it as personal property. This distinction really impacts financing, taxation, and licensing.
That's a lot of really important distinctions that literally define what's being bought and sold. Okay, let's build on that. How can property actually be owned in California? What are the different ways people can hold title? Hashtag tag 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 B, forms of ownership. So how can people own property in California? What are the main categories or forms of ownership?
Fundamentally, there are three basic ways to hold title. First, ownership in severality. Sounds complicated, but it just means sole ownership. One owner. It could be an individual person or even a single corporation. Severity means severed from other owners.
Okay, one owner. Simple enough.
Second, co-ownership, which is also called concurrent ownership. This is where two or more people share ownership of the same property at the same time. This is where things get more detailed. And third, ownership in trust. This is where a legal entity, a trust, holds the title to the property for the benefit of specific people or entities called beneficiaries, often used for estate planning or maybe privacy reasons.
Let's focus on co-ownership, since that's where most of the exam questions probably come from. Two key concepts here. Undivided interest and the right of survivorship. What do those mean?
Okay, undivided interest is a core concept in all co-ownership. It means that each co-owner has the right to possess and use the entire property, not just a specific physical portion of it. You don't own your half of the living room, you own, say, a 50% interest in the whole thing.
Okay, shared access to the whole property.
Exactly. Now, the right of survivorship is a huge distinguishing feature found in some forms of co-ownership, but not others. If the right of survivorship exists, it means when one co-owner dies, their ownership interest automatically passes directly to the surviving co-owner. It completely bypasses the deceased owner's will and their heirs.
Ah, avoids probate for that share.
Right. If there's no right of survivorship, then when a co-owner dies, their interest goes to their heirs or beneficiaries according to their will. This is called the right of inheritance. So survivorship versus inheritance is the key difference when a co-owner passes away.
That makes the distinction crystal clear. Okay, so what are the main types of co-ownership for two or more people? Especially highlighting the features that are likely to show up on the test.
Right. There are two primary types for multiple individuals, plus a crucial consideration for married couples specifically in California. First, tenancy in common. This is the default and most common form for unmarried co-owners, although married couples can choose it too. Key features. It has undivided interest, yes, but it features the right of inheritance. So NO right of survivorship. And critically, tenants in common can hold unequal shares of ownership. One person could own 70%, another 30%. They can also sell, or will their individual share independently.
Okay, inheritance, unequal shares possible.
Correct. Second, joint tenancy. This requires two or more people, married or unmarried. Key features. Undivided interest, yes, and usually includes the right of survivorship. Big difference there. Joint tenants always hold equal shares. You can't have a 60-40 split in joint tenancy. And creating a joint tenancy requires what are called the four unities. Unity of possession, equal right to possess. Unity of interest, equal shares. Unity of time, acquire title at the same time. And unity of title, acquire title through the same document or deed. If any of these four unities are ever broken, the joint tenancy is severed, and it automatically becomes tenancy in common.
PITT, possession, interest, time, title. Got it. Equal shares, survivorship.
You got it. And finally, for married couples in California. California is a community property state. This is a huge concept. It means that any property acquired by either spouse during the marriage is presumed to be owned equally by both spouses, 50-50, regardless of whose name is technically on the title. Selling community property generally requires both spouses' signatures. This also applies to registered domestic partners. There's also a related concept called quasi-community property. This is property acquired outside of California during the marriage that would have been community property if the couple had been living in California at the time they acquired it. It gets treated like community property upon divorce or death in California.
Community property is a big one for California. Okay, the four unities of joint tenancy, definitely something to commit to memory. Now, let's talk about the powers the government holds over all private land, often remembered by that simple acronym. Hashtag tag tag C. Government powers and land use controls. PITTE. Right. Your practice test specifically mentioned police power as a government right. Can you break down the four key government powers over land? We often use the acronym PIT for this, it feels pretty fundamental.
It absolutely is fundamental. PIT is a great way to remember these four distinct powers the government has over real property. P stands for police power. This is the government's inherent authority to regulate and restrict the use of land to protect the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. It's a very broad power, and importantly, it's exercised without providing compensation to the property owner. Key examples, and you correctly identified one on your test, are zoning ordinances, dictating land use residential, commercial, et cetera. Building codes, setting construction safety standards, and subdivision regulations controlling how land is divided. Rent control could also fall under this. E is for eminent domain. This is the government's power to take private property for public use, even if the owner doesn't want to sell.
The actual taking process.
The legal process used to exercise eminent domain is called condemnation. But crucially, the Fifth Amendment of the Constitution requires two things. The government must pay just compensation, usually defined as fair market value for the property, and the taking must be for a legitimate public benefit or use. The example from your test, Ken's house being taken to build a water treatment plant, that's a perfect illustration. It's a taking, but with compensation.
Police power is with regulation. No pay. Eminent domain taking with pay.
Excellent summary. T is for taxation. This is simply the government's right to levy taxes on private property to fund government operations and public services. The most common form is the ad valorem property tax, meaning according to value. This is another area you had a question on. And last E is for a sheet. This is kind of the fallback power. It's the legal doctrine where property reverts back to the state if the owner dies without a valid will and without any surviving spouse, lineal descendants, children, grandchildren, or other known legal heirs. It prevents property from becoming ownerless.
PIT. Got it. Okay, let's dig into ad valorem taxes a bit more. You got a question wrong about what they're based on. What's the core principle there for California?
Right. Ad valorem taxes are property taxes. They're levied primarily at the local level, county, city, school districts. And as the name says, according to value, they are based entirely upon the assessed value of the property. In California, we use what's called full assessment, which means the tax rate is applied to the property's true and fair market value, basically what it's worth. Now, Proposition 13 is famous in California for limiting the rate of these taxes. It caps the basic levy at no more than 1% of that assessed value, plus any additional amounts approved by voters for local bonds or special assessments. That 1% is sometimes expressed as $1 per $100, or $10 per $1,000 of assessed value. But the key point is the tax amount is always directly tied to the value of the property, which typically gets reassessed when the property changes ownership or undergoes major new construction.
And the California property tax payment schedule that caused some confusion for you on the practice test, too. Can you lay out the key dates? This is practical stuff every licensee needs to know cold.
It really is. Practical for clients and definitely shows up on the test. Okay, so in California, property taxes run on a fiscal year, July 1st to June 30th of the next year. Payments are typically made in two installments. Property tax bills usually come out around October. You can start paying on November 1st. The first installment covers the period from July 1st to December 31st. It's due starting November 1st and becomes delinquent if not paid by 5:00 PM on December 10th.
December 10th, 5:00 PM, first deadline.
Right. The second installment covers January 1st to June 30th. It's due starting February 1st and becomes delinquent after 5:00 PM on April 10th.
April 10th, 5:00 PM, second deadline.
Exactly. No darn fooling around, November, December, February, April. The 10th is the key date.
Nice mnemonic.
And if you're late, there's a 10% penalty on the installment amount. Plus, after that second installment becomes delinquent in April, they add a small extra fee, like $10, for adding the property to the official delinquent tax roll. So knowing those dates and that 5:00 PM cutoff is really crucial for advising clients and avoiding penalties.
Very important dates. Okay, let's shift to zoning. What is it fundamentally? And what are variances versus non-conforming uses? You correctly identified a variance in a practice test scenario, so let's make sure that's solid.
Okay. Zoning is the primary tool of police power. It's the division of land within a city or county into different districts or zones with specific regulations for how land in each zone can be used, e.g., residential, commercial, industrial, agricultural, and the type, size, and placement of buildings allowed. It's enforced through zoning laws and related building codes, all designed to shape development and protect property values. Now, a variance is basically permission granted by the local government to use or develop a property in a way that technically deviates from the current zoning regulation.
An exception, sort of.
Exactly, an exception. It's typically granted only when sticking strictly to the zoning rules would cause exceptional difficulties or undue hardship because of the property's unique physical limitations. Maybe it's an oddly-shaped lot or has very steep topography. Lenny's situation in your test, appealing because his building permit was denied due to zoning issues, is a perfect example. He's arguing he needs a variance because the standard rules create a hardship for his specific lot. It's about physical constraints.
Okay. And non-conforming use?
A non-conforming use is different. This refers to a land use that was legal when it was established, but because the zoning laws changed later, it no longer complies with the current regulations for its zone.
Like an old factory in an area that's now zoned residential.
Exactly. These uses are often allowed to continue, they're grandfathered in, but they usually face restrictions. They typically cannot be expanded, rebuilt if substantially damaged, or resumed after being discontinued for a certain period. And the body that usually handles appeals about zoning, interprets the rules, and grants or denies variances is often called the Board of Zoning Adjustment, or BZA.
Excellent distinction. Now, moving beyond the physical condition or zoning, what other kinds of material facts must sellers and agents disclose in California? Things related to public controls or environmental stuff. This goes beyond just a leaky faucet. Hashtag tag tag D, material facts and environmental public disclosures.
Oh, definitely. California law is pretty extensive on disclosures beyond just the obvious physical defects. We need to think about environmental issues and public controls. For environmental hazards, the big one is lead-based paint. For any housing built before 1978, federal law, Title X, requires sellers and landlords to disclose any known lead-based paint or hazards.
What does that involve?
It means providing any records or reports they have, giving buyers or renters an EPA-approved pamphlet, "Protect your family from lead in your home," including a specific lead warning statement in the contract or lease, and offering buyers a 10-day period to conduct their own lead inspection. and offering buyers a 10-day period to conduct their own lead inspection. Also, carbon monoxide detectors are required in most California homes with fuel-burning appliances or attached garages, and their presence or absence must be disclosed on the main disclosure form, the TDS. Agents should also be generally aware of potential issues like asbestos, common in older insulation and materials, and radon, a naturally occurring gas which would need disclosure if known.
Okay, lead and CO detectors are key. What about public controls or regulated areas?
Right. Disclosures are also required if the property is located near airports, public, private, or military, or close to ancillary military facilities, training routes, or restricted airspace. Think noise and safety zones. Near industrial zones with manufacturing or commercial facilities that might create noise, odors, or traffic. And, very importantly, located in certain specially regulated hazard areas. These are typically disclosed on a separate form called the Natural Hazards Disclosure Statement, NHD.
What does the NHD cover?
The NHD covers whether the property is in a special flood hazard area, an area of potential flooding if a dam fails, a very high fire hazard severity zone, a state-designated wildland fire area, or an earthquake fault zone, or a seismic hazard zone. It's crucial information for buyers about natural risks.
Makes sense. What about stigmatized properties? Like if a death occurred there? And maybe even more critically, what information are agents legally prohibited from disclosing? This feels like a minefield.
It can be sensitive, yes. Stigmatized properties are those where the value might be affected by psychological factors, not physical defects. Things like a murder or suicide on the property, or even reports of ghosts. In California, if a death occurred on the property within the last three years, it generally must be disclosed. Deaths older than three years usually don't require disclosure unless the death was related to AIDS, in which case it cannot be disclosed due to fair housing laws protecting medical status. Disclosure of how someone died, murder versus natural causes, isn't generally required, just the fact of death within three years.
Okay, three-year rule for deaths with the AIDS exception. What about what you can't disclose?
This is absolutely critical for avoiding fair housing violations. Agents are legally prohibited from disclosing any information related to federally protected classes. This means you cannot disclose or even answer questions about the race, color, religion, sex, including gender identity expression, sexual preference, national origin, familial status, presence of children under 18, or disability of current or former occupants or neighbors. Making any housing decision or providing different levels of service based on these characteristics is illegal discrimination.
So the example from the practice test, Zoe giving the pregnant woman a shorter tour.
That was illegal discrimination based on familial status. Pregnancy falls under this. She was providing unequal services.
And Megan's Law regarding sex offenders.
Agents should not investigate or disclose the location of registered sex offenders. The proper procedure is to inform buyers that a public database exists online where they can research this information themselves. Point them to the resource, don't become the source. This protects you and empowers the buyer.
And Frank's apartment application being denied due to low credit and prison record?
That was likely legal because poor credit history and criminal records, unless the conviction itself relates to a protected class issue, which is complex, are generally not protected classes under federal or state fair housing laws. Landlords can use legitimate business criteria like creditworthiness and criminal background checks as long as they apply them consistently to everyone.
That's a huge clarification.
Yeah.
Critical for ethical and legal practice.
Yeah.
Okay, let's transition now to the actual agreements that make everything happen. Contracts and leases. Right, let's talk contracts. They're the absolute backbone of any real estate transaction. What are the essential ingredients? What are the five core elements needed for a contract to be valid and legally binding?
Okay, for a contract to hold up in court, it needs these five essential elements. First, mutual assent, sometimes called meeting of the minds. This means there has to be a clear offer by one party and a clear acceptance of that exact offer by the other party, a full agreement on the terms. Second, consideration. Each party has to give something of value in exchange for what they're getting. It doesn't have to be money. It could be a promise to do something or a promise not to do something. It's the price each side pays for the other's promise. Third, legally competent parties. The people entering the contract must have the legal capacity to do so. That generally means being of legal age, 18-plus in California, and being mentally competent, understanding the nature and consequences of the agreement.
Which ties back to that practice test question, right? An adult of sound mind entering voluntarily has capacity.
Exactly. They wouldn't be party to avoidable contract based on lack of capacity. Fourth, reality of consent. The agreement must be genuine and voluntary. It can't be based on fraud, misrepresentation, duress, threats, undue influence, or a significant mistake about the facts. Consent has to be real. And fifth, lawful objective. The purpose of the contract itself must be legal. You can't have a valid contract to commit a crime, for example. It has to be for a lawful purpose.
Mutual assent, consideration, competent parties, reality of consent, lawful objective, got it. And how are contracts generally classified? Are there different types or categories we should know?
Yeah, contracts can be classified in a few key ways, based on how they're formed. Impplied, created by actions like ordering food in a restaurant, or express, created by explicit words either spoken or more commonly and preferably in real estate, written, based on the promises involved. Bilateral, a promise for, a promise most real estate purchase contracts are bilateral. Buyer promises to pay, seller promises to transfer title. Or unilateral, a promise for an act like an open listing. Seller promises commission if an agent brings a buyer, but the agent doesn't promise to find one. They only get paid if they perform the act.
Okay, bilateral is two promises, unilateral is promise for action.
Right. And based on their status. Executed, the contract is fully performed, all done like after closing. Or executory, some obligations still remain to be performed by one or both parties. It's still in progress, like a purchase agreement before closing day.
That's a helpful overview. Okay, now let's tackle a specific legal concept that tripped you up a bit on the practice test. The statute of frauds. Hashtag, hashtag, hashtag B. The statute of frauds and contract practices, right? The statute of frauds. This was an area where you stumbled. What exactly is it? And maybe more importantly, what does it require in California, especially concerning real estate?
Okay, the statute of frauds is a state law, exists in some form in every state, that requires certain specific types of contracts to be in writing and signed by the party being charged, the one you're trying to enforce it against, in order to be enforceable in court.
In writing to be enforceable, key phrase.
Absolutely key. It doesn't necessarily mean an oral agreement is illegal, just that a court typically won't force someone to follow it if it falls under the statute of frauds and isn't written. In California, the statute of frauds applies to several types of agreements, but the crucial ones for real estate are: any agreement that, by its terms, cannot be performed within one year from the date it was made; leases of real property for a term longer than one year. So, a one-year lease can be oral, but a lease for one year and one day must be written. And most importantly for sales, any agreement for the sale of real property or an interest in real property, like an easement or mortgage. These absolutely must be in writing.
Okay, so leases over a year in any sale of real estate.
Yeah.
What about that one-year rule? Is there a nuance there?
Yes. A tricky point often tested. If a lease is for less than one year, say six months, but its term won't expire until more than one year after the agreement is made, it still needs to be in writing. You agree today, June 24th, 2025, to rent an apartment for six months, but the lease doesn't start until January 1st, 2026. It will end June 30th, 2026. Even though the lease term is only six months, the completion date is more than one year from today's agreement date. So that needs to be in writing. The clock starts from the date of agreement.
That's a subtle but important distinction. Okay, what about the statute of limitations? How long do you have to actually sue someone for breaching these contracts in California?
Right, the statute of limitations sets deadlines for filing lawsuits. The main ones to know in California related to contracts are: two years for lawsuits based on oral contracts, like that verbal lease for under a year; three years for lawsuits seeking relief based on fraud or mistake. Also remember, the DRE generally has three years to take disciplinary action against a licensee.
Unless it's fraud, then it's one year from discovery.
Exactly, you got it. That three-year limit for fraud lawsuits also starts from the date the fraud or mistake was or should have been discovered. And four years for lawsuits based on written contracts. This is the big one for most real estate purchase agreement disputes. And again, that four-year clock starts ticking from the date the contract was breached, not the date it was signed.
Okay, two for oral, three for fraud mistake, four for written. Got it. Now, a crucial practical point. Can real estate agents actually draft contracts themselves? Or significantly change the standard ones? What's the line here?
Absolutely not. This is a huge ethical and legal boundary. Drafting contracts or adding complex legal clauses beyond just filling in blanks on pre-printed, attorney-approved forms constitutes the unauthorized practice of law.
Big trouble.
Huge trouble. Agents can and should explain the meaning of the clauses in standard forms, like the SAAR contracts, to their clients. They can fill in the blanks for things like names, dates, prices, property descriptions, but they cannot draft their own legal language, add complex contingencies, or give legal advice about what a client should do or what a clause legally means in their specific situation.
So explain, don't advise legally.
Precisely. If a client needs specific legal drafting or advice, the agent's duty is to advise them to consult a qualified real estate attorney. Your role is facilitation and expertise in real estate matters, not legal counsel.
That's a critical line to maintain. Okay, let's move into the heart of the deal itself. Offers, counteroffers, and that main purchase contract. Hashtag, tag, 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 C offers, counteroffers, and the purchase contract, RPA. When dealing with offers, especially if things get competitive, how should agents handle them? Is a buyer's offer considered confidential information by the seller?
That's a common misconception buyers might have. Generally speaking, purchase offers are not confidential from the seller's perspective. Yeah. A seller and their agent can typically disclose the terms of one buyer's offer to other potential buyers to try and solicit better offers. It's a negotiation tactic, essentially trying to create a bidding war. Now, as an agent, your duty is to your client. So a buyer's agent should advise their client this might happen. A seller's agent might use this strategically, but always within ethical bounds and following the seller's instructions. Your role is to help your client navigate this, considering price, terms, contingencies, closing dates, earnest money, all of it.
Good to know. What's the go-to form for making offers and writing up the purchase contract for residential properties in California?
The most widely used form, especially by members of the California Association of Realtors, CAR, for one to four-unit residential deals, is the Residential Purchase Agreement and Joint Escrow Instructions, usually just called the RPA. It's a really comprehensive document and serves a dual purpose. When the buyer fills it out and signs it, it's their offer. Once the seller accepts it without changes, signs it, and communicates that acceptance back, it becomes the binding purchase contract. It lays out all the terms and conditions of the sale.
Okay, the RPA is central. Now, what happens if the seller doesn't just accept? What if they make a counteroffer? Does the original offer stay on the table?
No, absolutely not. A counteroffer acts as a rejection of the original offer. The moment a counteroffer is made, the original offer is legally dead, gone.
It kills the first offer.
It kills the first offer completely. The counteroffer is essentially a new offer from the seller back to the buyer with modified terms. This is really important. If a seller sends a counteroffer to buyer A and then gets a better offer from buyer B before buyer A accepts, the seller must formally withdraw the counteroffer to buyer A before they can accept buyer B's offer. Otherwise, they risk being under contract with two different buyers if buyer A accepts before the withdrawal.
Tricky situation.
Can be. And licensees need to advise their buyer clients that even when they receive a counteroffer, the property is still technically on the market. The seller can withdraw the counter or accept another offer until that counter is signed, sealed, and delivered back.
Okay. And what about handling multiple counteroffers in California? There's a specific process, right? It's not just first come, first served. This seems unique.
Yes. California has a specific form and process for this, often using the Seller Multiple Counteroffer, SMCO form. And you're right, it's a key distinction from how it works in some other places. With the SMCO, the seller can send the same counteroffer terms to multiple buyers simultaneously. Here's the kicker. Multiple buyers can actually accept that SMCO and send it back to the seller.
The multiple buyers might think they have a deal.
They might think they're close. But the seller then reviews all the accepted SMCOs they receive back. And the seller then gets to choose which one of those buyers they want to proceed with. For the SMCO to become a fully binding contract with the chosen buyer, there's a specific signature sequence. The seller signs the main part, paragraph five usually. The buyer signs their acceptance, paragraph seven. Then, the seller must sign again in a specific final acceptance box, paragraph eight, on the one SMCO they choose. And the buyer must receive a copy showing all those signatures.
That second seller signature is the key.
That second seller signature in paragraph eight is absolutely crucial. It's the seller's final selection that makes that specific SMCO binding. Without it, even if the buyer signed, there's no deal yet. Definitely a point to remember for the exam.
That's a really important California-specific detail. Okay, let's shift from purchase contracts to agreements about possessing property without owning it. Leases. Let's cover leasehold interest, landlord-tenant law, and the eviction process. Hashtag, tag, tag, DDL. Leasehold interests, landlord-tenant law, and eviction. What are the different types of leasehold estates? How do they differ in terms of how long they last and how they end?
Okay, there are four main types of leasehold estates, which basically grant possession but not ownership. First is an estate for years. Despite the name, it doesn't have to be for years. It just means it has a specific fixed start date and a specific fixed end date. Could be six months, could be five years. It terminates automatically on that end date. No notice is usually required.
Fixed term, automatic end.
Right. Second is an estate from period to period, also called a periodic tenancy. This has a fixed lease period, like month to month or year to year, that automatically renews for successive periods until either the landlord or the tenant gives proper notice to terminate. This is your typical residential rental agreement.
Auto renews until notice, got it.
Third is an estate at will. This is less formal. The tenant occupies the property with the landlord's consent, but there's no definite term or agreement on rent payment frequency. It can be terminated by either party at any time, usually with relatively short statutory notice. It's based purely on mutual will. And fourth is an estate at sufferance. This happens when a tenant who was originally there legally stays in possession after their lease has expired, but without the landlord's consent. They're often called a holdover tenant. They're technically trespassing, but the landlord has to go through the formal eviction process to remove them. They're there purely by the landlord's sufferance until action is taken.
Okay, four types now. The California Tenant Protection Act of 2019. There's a question you missed on the practice test, so let's make sure we nail this down. It sounds like a really important piece of recent legislation. What were its main impacts?
It is absolutely vital to understand this act, often called AB 1482. It brought major statewide changes for residential landlords and tenants. It did three really significant things across California. One, it established statewide just cause eviction requirements. This means for tenants who have lived in a unit for 12 months or more, or 24 months if new tenants moved in during that first year, the landlord can only terminate the tenancy for specific stated reasons, like failure to pay rent, breaching the lease, creating a nuisance, or the landlord intending to move in themselves or substantially remodel. They can't just end the tenancy for no reason anymore in most cases.
Big protection for tenants.
Huge, too. And this was the specific detail you needed for your test. It capped annual rent increases statewide. The cap is 5% plus the local rate of inflation, CPI, or R, 10% annually, whichever amount is LSS. This provides significant rent stabilization for eligible properties, preventing huge, unexpected rent hikes.
5% plus CPI or 10% max, whichever is lower. Got it.
Exactly. And three, the act explicitly states that tenants cannot waive these rights. Any clause in a lease attempting to make a tenant give up their just cause or rent cap protections is void and unenforceable. It's important to note, though, that some properties are exempt, like newer constructions, single-family homes owned by individuals, not corporations, duplexes where the owner lives in one unit, and stricter local rent control ordinances, like in SF or LA, still apply if they offer greater tenant protection. This act is the statewide minimum.
That's a really significant set of protections. Okay, what about landlord access? When can a landlord legally enter a rented property in California? They could just barge in, right? What notice is needed?
No, definitely not. Tenant privacy is protected. Landlords have specific rights to enter, but generally they must provide proper notice. They can't enter. To make necessary or agreed-upon repairs, decorations, alterations, or improvements; to supply necessary or agreed-upon services; to show the unit to prospective or actual purchasers, mortgagers, tenants, workers, or contractors; pursuant to a court order if the tenant has abandoned or surrendered the premises; or in case of a genuine emergency.
And the notice.
For most non-emergency entries, the landlord must give the tenant reasonable written notice, which is generally presumed to be 24 hours. The notice should state the date, approximate time, and purpose of entry. Entry must be during normal business hours unless the tenant consents otherwise. No notice is required for emergencies, or if the tenant has given consent at the time of entry, or if they abandon the unit. If a tenant requests repairs, that usually implies consent for entry to fix that specific issue.
What rights do tenants have if the landlord doesn't fulfill their obligations? Like if the heat breaks in winter and the landlord won't fix it, issues of habitability?
Tenants have a fundamental right to a safe and habitable living environment. The law implies a warranty of habitability in every residential lease. If a landlord fails to make necessary repairs to maintain habitability, things like lack of heat, plumbing issues, roof leaks, unsafe wiring, after being given reasonable written notice.
Reasonable notice usually means?
Usually considered 30 days for non-emergency repairs, though less time might be reasonable depending on the severity. If the landlord still doesn't fix it, the tenant has several potential remedies in California. They can use the repair and deduct remedy. The tenant pays for the repair themselves and deducts the cost from their next rent payment. But this is limited. The cost can't exceed one month's rent, and they can only do it twice in any 12-month period. They can abandon the property. If the conditions are so bad that the place is truly unlivable, the tenant might be able to move out and be released from further rent obligations under the doctrine of constructive eviction. Risky, needs documentation. They can withhold rent, but this is also risky. It's generally advised to put the withheld rent into an escrow account to show good faith rather than just not paying. It often leads to an eviction lawsuit where habitability becomes the defense. Or they can report the landlord to local health or building code enforcement agencies, or file a lawsuit against the landlord seeking damages or an order forcing repairs. In all cases, written notice to the landlord and allowing reasonable time for repair is absolutely crucial before a tenant takes action. Documentation is key.
And security deposits? You mentioned the rules changed. What's the current limit a landlord can charge in California?
Right, this changed recently. As of July 1st, 2024, for new leases or renewals, landlords in California generally cannot demand or receive a security deposit totaling more than one month's rent.
Just one month's rent?
Yep.
Regardless of furnished or unfurnished?
Generally, yes. Just one month's rent maximum now for most residential properties. There might be very limited exceptions for small landlords under specific circumstances, but the main rule is one month's rent. And remember, it's a security deposit meant to cover damages beyond normal wear and tear or unpaid rent. It's not a non-refundable cleaning fee. Landlords must return the unused portion along with an itemized list of deductions within 21 days after the tenant moves out.
Okay, finally, the eviction process in California. No one wants it, but licensees need to understand the legal steps. Can you walk us through the basics?
Eviction, or unlawful detainer, as the lawsuit is called, is the formal legal process a landlord must use to remove a tenant who is defaulting on their lease, for example, not paying rent, violating terms, or refusing to leave after the tenancy is properly terminated. Self-help eviction, like changing the locks, is illegal. It typically starts with the landlord serving the tenant with a written notice. The most common is a three-day notice to pay rent or quit. Or a three-day notice to perform covenant, fix a lease violation, or quit.
How must that notice be served?
Proper service is critical. It should be personally delivered to the tenant. If the tenant isn't home, it can be left with a competent person at the residence or usual place of business. And D, a copy must be mailed. If neither of those works, it can be posted conspicuously on the property, like taped to the door. And M.D., a copy must be mailed. Nail and mail. If the tenant doesn't comply with the notice within the three days, pay the rent, fix the violation, or move out, the landlord's next step is to file an unlawful detainer lawsuit in Superior Court. The court issues a summons, which must be properly served on the tenant. The tenant then has a short time, usually five days, to file a formal response with the court. If the tenant doesn't respond, the landlord can ask for a default judgment. If they do respond, a trial is usually scheduled very quickly. If the landlord wins the lawsuit, either by default or trial, the court issues a writ of possession. This writ is given to the county sheriff.
Only the sheriff can physically remove them.
Only the sheriff. The sheriff posts a notice giving the tenant five days to leave voluntarily. If they don't leave, the sheriff will physically remove them and restore possession to the landlord. Tenants generally have about 15 days after being locked out to retrieve any personal belongings left behind. It's a very specific legal process with strict timelines and procedures. Landlords must follow it exactly.
And ejectment is slightly different.
Right. Ejectment is a similar legal action to remove someone from property, but it's used when the person occupying the property is not a tenant, maybe a squatter, or someone whose right to be there ended but wasn't based on a landlord-tenant relationship. Unlawful detainer is specifically for landlord-tenant situations.
That's a very clear step-by-step explanation. Okay, let's transition into the money side of things. Real estate finance, how properties are valued, and the tax implications. Hashtag, tag, tag, V. Real estate finance, valuation, and taxation. Hashtag, tag, tag, A. The foundations of real estate finance. All right, let's tackle finance. Your practice tests showed a few stumbles here, especially with the basic documents. So, first things first. What are the two absolutely essential documents that make up a typical mortgage loan? Why do we need both?
Okay, yeah. Every standard mortgage loan really hangs on two distinct but interconnected documents. The promissory note and the security instrument. You need both for a complete loan package. They serve different vital functions.
Let's start with the promissory note. What exactly is it? And you correctly identified this on your test, but what does it mean for it to be a negotiable instrument? Let's reinforce that.
Okay, the promissory note is basically the evidence of the debt. It's the borrower's written promise to repay a specific amount of money to the lender. It details all the critical loan terms. The loan amount, principal, the interest rate, the payment schedule, how much, how often, for how long. It's the IOU of the mortgage world. Now, the fact that it's a negotiable instrument is key. Just like a personal check, it means the note itself can be bought and sold, transferred, or assigned to another party.
That's why your mortgage sometimes gets sold to a different company.
Exactly. That's why homeowners often get notices saying, "Your loan has been transferred. Start making payments to this new company." The underlying promise to pay, the note, has been sold. This negotiability is what allows for the secondary mortgage market to exist.
Okay. And the other document, the security instrument. You got this right too, but what's its specific job?
The security instrument is what ties the debt, the promise in the note, to the actual property. Its job is to pledge the property as collateral or security for the loan.
Collateral, okay.
Right. In California, this is usually a deed of trust, though sometimes it can be a mortgage instrument. By pledging the property, the borrower gives the lender the right to force the sale of the property, foreclosure, if the borrower defaults on the payments promised in the note. This security is what makes lenders willing to offer lower interest rates. It reduces their risk, because they have a claim to a valuable asset if things go wrong. This pledging of property as collateral without giving up possession is also known by the term hypothecation. You hypothecate your house to get the loan.
Hypothecation, got it. Now, California has this interesting position regarding lien theory versus title theory states. Can you explain that? Especially since California mostly uses the deed of trust.
Yeah, this is a bit nuanced but important. Generally, states are categorized based on who holds title during the loan term. In lien theory states, the borrower holds legal title to the property throughout the loan term. The lender simply places a lien on the property as security. In title theory states, the borrower technically conveys legal title to the lender, or a trustee, when the loan is made. The borrower retains possession and equitable title, but the lender holds legal title until the debt is paid off. Now, California is technically classified as a lien theory state by statute, however...
Sure, but...
There's a big but. The preferred and most common security instrument here is the deed of trust, which actually functions much more like a title theory instrument. With a deed of trust, there are three parties. The trustor, that's the borrower. The beneficiary, that's the lender. And the trustee, a neutral third party. The trustor, borrower, conveys a sort of bare legal title to the trustee, who holds it in trust for the beneficiary lender until the loan is paid back. So even though California is technically lien in theory, the practical mechanism involves a third-party holding title, which mirrors title theory. This structure allows for nonjudicial foreclosure, which is generally faster for the lender if default occurs.
Trustor, beneficiary, trustee. Okay. What about clauses you might find in these security instruments that are designed to protect the borrower?
Yeah, especially with adjustable-rate mortgages, ARMs. You often find protective clauses like rate caps and payment caps. Rate caps limit how much the interest rate can change. There's usually a periodic cap, how much it can change at each adjustment period, like once a year, and a lifetime cap. How high the rate can ever go over the entire loan term. Payment caps limit how much the actual monthly principal and interest payment can increase at each adjustment, even if the interest rate change would technically call for a much bigger jump. This prevents extreme payment shock. These caps provide borrowers with some level of predictability and protection against huge, unaffordable increases in their housing costs.
That's a really solid foundation on the loan docs. Okay, let's broaden out now to the mortgage market itself and look at different kinds of loans available. Hashtag, tag, tag, rate B. The mortgage market and loan types. Let's talk about where these loans come from. What's the basic difference between the primary mortgage market and the secondary mortgage market? You correctly identified a secondary market on the test, but let's define both clearly.
Okay. The primary mortgage market is where loans are created. It's where you, the borrower, interact directly with lenders' banks, credit unions, mortgage companies to apply for and originate a new loan. Think of it as the retail level of mortgage lending.
Where you get the loan initially.
Exactly. The secondary mortgage market, on the other hand, is where those loans, after they've been created, are bought and sold. It's a market for existing mortgages. Lenders sell pools of their originated loans to investors or larger agencies in the secondary market. This is absolutely critical because it provides liquidity for the primary lenders.
Liquidity meaning?
Meaning it allows them to convert those loans, which are assets but not cash, back into cash. By selling off their existing loans, they get fresh capital, which they can then use to reload and make more new loans to other borrowers. It keeps the money flowing for housing finance.
Which leads to that question you missed. Without a secondary market, what would mortgages be considered?
Right. Without that robust secondary market, mortgages would be considered relatively illiquid assets for the original lenders. It would be much harder and slower for them to turn those loans back into cash. The secondary market creates that relative ease of conversion, making lenders much more willing and able to originate loans in the first place. It's vital for the whole system.
Who are the major players buying up all these loans in the secondary market? The big institutions?
The dominant players are often government-sponsored enterprises, or GSEs. The big ones you hear about are Fannie Mae. Its actual name is the Federal National Mortgage Association, FNMA. It's a huge player. Buys mortgages, bundles them into securities. Traditionally works more with large commercial banks. Loans that meet Fannie Mae's specific purchasing deadlines, like loan size limits, borrower credit criteria, are called conforming loans. Freddie Mac, Federal Home Loan Mortgage Corporation, FHLMC. Very similar to Fannie Mae, but historically it specialized more in buying loans from smaller lenders, like savings and loans or thrift banks. Also deals mostly in conforming loans. Then there's Farmer Mac, Federal Agricultural Mortgage Corporation. As the name implies, it focuses specifically on purchasing agricultural loans and loans in rural areas. And finally, Ginnie Mae, Government National Mortgage Association, GNMA. Ginnie Mae is different because it's not a GSE. It's actually owned by the US government, part of HUD. Its main role is to guarantee the timely payment of principal and interest on mortgage-backed securities that are backed by government-insured or guaranteed loans, like FHA and VA loans. Ginnie Mae securities carry the full faith and credit guarantee of the US government, making them very safe investments.
And their main activity is buying loans and...
Buying loans from originators and then packaging those loans into pools to create mortgage-backed securities, MBS. These MBS are then sold to investors, like pension funds, insurance companies, mutual funds, on the global market. It's how individual home loans get turned into large-scale investments.
Okay, let's shift to different types of loans. You got a question wrong distinguishing between purchase-money mortgages and bridge loans. Can you break those down clearly? They sound like they serve very different needs.
Yeah, they're quite different. Let's clarify. A purchase-money mortgage, or purchase-money loan, refers to a situation where the seller of the property provides some or all of the financing for the buyer.
Seller financing.
Essentially, yes. The buyer might get a primary loan from a bank, but borrows an additional amount directly from the seller. Or in some cases, the seller might finance the entire purchase, taking back a note and deed of trust from the buyer instead of receiving all cash. It's financing provided by the seller specifically for the purchase of that property. A bridge loan, on the other hand, is a short-term loan. Typically for a few weeks, up to maybe three years. Its purpose is to bridge a temporary gap in funding.
Like between selling one house and buying another.
That's the classic example. You need the down payment for your new house before your old house sells. A bridge loan provides those funds temporarily, secured maybe by both properties, until the sale closes and you can pay it back. So one is seller financing for the purchase. The other is a temporary loan for a timing gap.
Got it. You also seem confused by graduated payment mortgages. What's the defining feature of those?
A graduated payment mortgage, GPM, is a type of fixed-rate loan where the initial monthly payments are lower than they would be on a standard fixed-rate loan, and then they gradually increase at set intervals, like annually, for the first few years of the loan, eventually leveling off at a higher amount for the remaining term. The idea is to make it easier for borrowers whose income is expected to rise over time, like young professionals, to afford the home initially. The trade-off is that the payments get higher later, and sometimes negative amortization can occur early on if the payments don't cover all the interest.
Okay, payments start low, then step up. And what's a construction mortgage?
A construction mortgage, or a construction loan, is specifically designed to finance the building of a new home or a major renovation project. It's usually a temporary, short-term loan. Unlike a regular mortgage where you get all the money at closing, construction loan funds are typically dispersed in stages, or draws, as different phases of the construction are completed and inspected. Once construction is finished, it's often replaced by a permanent takeout loan.
Makes sense. Now FHA loans. You got a question right on their benefits, but they're so important, let's reinforce the key characteristics. What makes them attractive, especially to certain buyers?
FHA loans, insured by the Federal Housing Administration, are hugely important, especially for first-time buyers or those with less cash saved up. Their biggest selling point is the very low down payment requirement, as low as 3.5% of the purchase price. And that down payment can even come from a gift from a relative or an approved nonprofit. Makes homeownership much more accessible.
Why are lenders okay with such a low down payment?
Because the FHA insures the loan. The government guarantees the lender against loss if the borrower defaults. This insurance is paid for by the borrower through mortgage insurance premiums, MIP. There's an upfront MIP, currently 1.75% of the loan amount, often financed into the loan, and an annual MIP paid in monthly installments as part of the mortgage payment. This annual MIP usually lasts for the life of the loan if the down payment was less than 10%. Other features. FHA loans generally have more flexible credit score requirements than conventional loans. They don't have prepayment penalties. They are assumable, meaning a qualified buyer could potentially take over the seller's existing FHA loan. Downsides. There are maximum loan amount limits that vary by county. The property has to meet certain minimum condition standards and be appraised by an FHA-approved appraiser. And crucially, FHA loans are only for owner occupants. You have to intend to live in the property as your primary residence. No investment properties.
Owner occupants only. Good reminder.
Okay.
Are there other common loan types we should briefly mention?
Sure, a few others pop up. Balloon payment mortgages. These often have a shorter term, like five or seven years, but the payments are calculated as if it were a longer-term loan, like 30 years. This results in lower payments, but at the end of the short term, the entire remaining loan balance is due in one large lump sum, the balloon payment. Straight loans, interest-only loans. A type of balloon loan where the borrower only pays the interest each month for a set period. The full principal amount is then due as a balloon payment at the end of the term. Open-end mortgages. These allow the borrower to borrow additional funds later, up to a certain limit, using the same mortgage as security. Like a home equity line of credit, HLOC, secured by the first mortgage. Package mortgages. The loan includes both the real estate and certain personal property, like appliances or furniture. More common in commercial or resort properties. Reverse mortgages. Specifically for homeowners age 62 or older, allows them to convert some of their home equity into tax-free cash payments, lump sum, monthly installments, or line of credit without having to sell the home. The loan is typically repaid when the homeowner sells, moves out permanently, or passes away. Home equity loans. A loan where the borrower uses the equity they've built up in their home as collateral. Can be a fixed-term loan, HEL, or revolving line of credit, HELOC. Funds can be used for any purpose.
Wow, lots of options. Okay, let's get into how lenders actually decide. Qualifying the borrower, qualifying the property, and some key calculation concepts. Hashtag, tag, tag, C borrower and property qualification and calculation concepts. So, how does a lender actually decide if they'll approve a specific borrower for a loan? What's that process look like? From just asking to getting the final okay?
It's typically a multi-stage process. It often starts with prequalification. This is usually quick, informal, based mostly on what the borrower tells the lender about their income, assets, and debts. It gives a rough idea of how much they might be able to borrow. Not very reliable. The next step, much more valuable, is preapproval. Here, the lender actually collects documentation, pay stubs, tax returns, bank statements, and pulls the borrower's credit report. They do a preliminary analysis and issue a preapproval letter stating a specific loan amount they're likely willing to lend, subject to final verification and property approval. This makes a buyer's offer much stronger.
Okay, preapproval is better than what?
Yeah. Then comes the formal loan application and the underwriting process. Underwriting is the lender's detailed, final risk analysis. The underwriter meticulously reviews the borrower's creditworthiness. FICO scores are a huge factor here. Higher score generally means lower perceived risk of default. They verify income, employment stability, assets, and existing debts. They're asking, can this person reliably repay this loan? Simultaneously, they evaluate the property itself to make sure it's adequate collateral.
How do they measure affordability? You hear about ratios. What are qualifying ratios? And specifically, the difference between payment-to-income front end and debt-to-income back end?
Right. Underwriters rely heavily on qualifying ratios to assess affordability objectively. The payment-to-income ratio, often called the housing expense ratio or front-end ratio, compares the proposed total monthly housing payment, PITI, to the borrower's stable gross before-tax monthly income.
PTI again is...
PITI is principal, interest, property taxes, and homeowner's insurance. All the core housing costs rolled together. For most conventional loans, lenders typically want this PITI payment to be no more than 28% of the borrower's gross monthly income. The debt-to-income ratio, or DTI, also called the back-end ratio, is broader. It compares all of the borrower's recurring monthly debt payments, the proposed PITI, plus other long-term debts like car payments, student loans, credit card minimum payments to their gross monthly income. This requires pulling a credit report and verifying all those other debts. Lenders usually set a maximum DTI limit to, perhaps around 36% for conventional loans, maybe higher, like 43% or even 50% plus for FHA or other government loans, depending on compensating factors. It measures the borrower's total debt burden relative to their income.
So front end is just housing costs, back end is all debt?
Exactly. Both are critical hurdles in underwriting.
And how does the lender approve the property itself? What are they checking for?
They need to make sure the collateral is solid. So they perform due diligence on the property. This always includes a title search to check for liens, encumbrances, or ownership issues. And crucially, they require an appraisal. An independent licensed appraiser provides an estimate of the property's current market value. The lender wants to ensure the property's value is high enough to fully secure the loan amount. They'll usually lend based on the lower of the purchase price or the appraised value.
Which brings us to loan-to-value, LTV ratio. What is that and why is it so important?
LTV is simply the ratio of the loan amount compared to the property's value, again, usually the lower of price or appraisal, expressed as a percentage. So if you're buying a $500,000 house and getting a $400,000 loan, your LTV is 400K, 500K point eight to raise, or 80%. A higher LTV means a smaller down payment and is therefore considered riskier for the lender. Conventional loans typically prefer an LTV of 80% or less, meaning a 20% or more down payment. If the LTV is greater than 80% on a conventional loan, the lender will almost always require the borrower to pay for private mortgage insurance, PMI. PMI protects the lender, not the borrower, against loss if the borrower defaults on the loan. It compensates for the higher risk associated with a smaller down payment.
Makes sense, higher LTV, more risky, and PMI needed. Let's touch quickly on commission calculations again. This is a theme in your practice test results, and it's bread-and-butter math for agents.
Definitely fundamental math. Most commission problems boil down to understanding the relationship between the part, the percentage rate, and the total sales price. You just need to know which two you have and solve for the third. The formulas are simple variations. Total X percentage equals part. Sales price X commission rate equals commission amount. That's the most common one. Like your $200,000 sale by 3%, 3.03 equals $6,000 commission. Part-total percentage commission amount is sales price commission rate. Like Josh's scenario. $11,340 commission, $889,000 sales price equals 0.06, or 6% rate. Part by percentage on a total, commission amount, commission rate equals sales price. Less common, but useful if you know the commission earned and the rate. Understanding this basic part-total percentage relationship is key for commissions, splits between agents, and even other calculations. For mortgage payments, you often use a mortgage factor chart. The chart gives you the monthly principal and interest, P plus I payment, per $1,000 of loan amount for a given interest rate and term. You just multiply that factor by the number of thousands in your loan principal to get the P plus I payment. Practice makes perfect.
Okay, good review. Now, taxes and real estate. You missed the capital gains tax exclusion for married couples on your test, and that's a huge benefit homeowners need to know about.
Yes, this is a really significant tax break and very commonly tested. Thanks to the Taxpayer Relief Act of 1997, homeowners get a major exclusion on capital gains when they sell their primary residence. For single homeowners, they can exclude up to $250,000 of the profit capital gain from federal income tax. For married homeowners filing jointly, that exclusion doubles to $500,000.
250K single, $500 married.
Right. To qualify, you generally must have owned the home. AND lived in it as your principal residence for at least two out of the last five years, ending on the date of sale. The two years don't have to be continuous. So in the example you saw, married couple buys for $400, sells later for $550K. Their profit is $150K. Since $150K is well under their $500 exclusion limit, their entire profit is tax-free at the federal level. It's a fantastic benefit. Definitely remember $250K, $500, and the two-out-of-five-year rule.
Huge benefit. Any other key tax things agents should be aware of, maybe for investors too?
Yeah, a few others. The mortgage interest deduction, MID, still exists, though limits have changed. Homeowners can generally deduct interest paid on home acquisition debt up to $750,000 for married filing jointly, or $375,000 if married filing separately. Property tax deductions are also possible, but they're now capped at $10,000 per household per year, combined for all state and local taxes, falls sold, including property taxes, income taxes, or sales taxes. Points paid to obtain a mortgage are generally deductible in the year paid if certain conditions are met. Prepayment penalties too. For investors, depreciation is a huge one. It allows them to take a noncash deduction each year based on the theoretical wear and tear of the building, not the land, over its useful life. 27.5 years for residential, 39 years for commercial. This tax shelter starts when the property is placed in service, meaning ready and available for rent. And like-kind exchanges, often called Fed 1331 exchanges, are incredibly powerful for investors. They allow an investor to sell one investment property and reinvest the proceeds into another like-kind investment property, deferring the payment of capital gains taxes. Very specific rules and timelines apply, but it's a cornerstone of real estate investment strategy.
Lots of financial ground covered there. Okay, let's wrap up with a finish line. Closing costs and the critical disclosure documents involved. Hashtag, tag, 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 D. Closing costs and disclosures. Let's talk about those crucial documents you get right before closing. You got a question wrong about which specific law created the loan estimate and the closing disclosure. These forms are central to the modern mortgage process.
Right, that's an easy point of confusion because they replaced older forms mandated by earlier laws. The loan estimate, LE, and the closing disclosure, CD, were specifically created by the treaty rule. Treaty stands for the TILA-Ruspa Integrated Disclosure Rule. It was implemented by the Consumer Financial Protection Bureau, CFPB, to combine and simplify the disclosures previously required under the Truth in Lending Act, TILA, and the Real Estate Settlement Procedures Act, RESPA. So while TILA and RESPA laid the groundwork for disclosure, it was the treaty rule that actually mandated these specific integrated LE and CD forms to make things clearer and easier for consumers to compare loan offers and understand their final closing costs.
Okay, Tree ID created the LE and CD. Got it. When must the borrower receive that closing disclosure? There's a strict timing rule, right? Designed to prevent surprises at the closing table.
Absolutely. The lender, creditor, is legally required to ensure the consumer receives the closing disclosure, the CD, no later than three business days before loan consummation.
Three business days before closing?
Three business days before consummation, which is the day the borrower becomes contractually obligated on the loan, usually the day they sign the final loan documents. This three-day review period is critical. It gives borrowers time to actually read through the final numbers, compare them to the loan estimate they received earlier, ask questions, and make sure everything is as expected before they commit. It aims to eliminate those last-minute surprises. The loan estimate, LE, also has timing rules. It must be delivered or mailed within three business days after the lender receives the borrower's application, and at least seven business days before consummation.
Okay, three days for the CD review. Now, what about the actual closing costs? What are some common ones, and who typically pays what in California? Keeping in mind it can be negotiated.
Right, closing costs can be significant, and who pays is often dictated by the purchase contract. But there are common customs in California. Buyer's costs often include: the appraisal fee required by their lender, any loan points they choose to pay to lower their interest rate, recording fees for the deed and their deed of trust. There's a base fee plus pool page charges, usually buyer pays, their share of prorated property taxes and insurance, sometimes a portion of the escrow or settlement fee, lender's title insurance policy premium.
Okay, and the seller?
Seller's costs typically include: paying off any existing mortgages or liens on the property, the real estate agent commissions. Usually, the owner's title insurance policy premium. This is customary for the seller to pay in many parts of CA, but negotiable. Any HOA transfer fees or fees for providing HOA documents, often seller pays, but negotiable. Their share of prorated property taxes, the documentary transfer tax, and often a portion of the escrow fee. Prorations, as you mentioned, are important. Expenses paid in advance or arrears, like property taxes, HOA dues, sometimes rent, are divided between buyer and seller, so each pays for the exact period they own the property during that billing cycle. Ensures fairness.
And you mentioned the documentary transfer tax. What is that again?
Right. This is a tax levied by the county and sometimes cities when real property is transferred. It's calculated based on the purchase price. The base rate for the county in California is level 55 per $500 of the purchase price, or portion thereof. So on a $500,000 sale, that's $500,000, 500,000, 55,007, 55 equals 55 dollars. It's typically paid by the seller, but again, it's technically negotiable via the purchase contract. It's one of those definite closing costs to account for. Hashtag, tag, tag, outroper.
Wow, okay. We have definitely covered a huge amount of ground today. Really digging into the nuances of agency contracts, finance, property law, taxes, all the big areas. And importantly, we specifically zeroed in on those concepts that tend to be challenging, drawing directly from areas where you, our listener, but have stumbled on practice tests.
Absolutely. And remember, the real goal here isn't just to cram facts for the test. It's about connecting these pieces, understanding how they fit together in the real world of California real estate. Every concept we talked about today, especially those tricky ones, is meant to build your confidence, to turn those potential pitfalls into aha moments. Focus on why these rules exist, usually consumer protection, and the details become much easier to retain. It builds that professional intuition.
Think of this deep dive as your own personalized study guide. We hit the areas you likely needed most, based on common challenges. So review these concepts. Maybe visualize the scenarios we discussed, the blind ad, the dual-agency disclosure, the counteroffer process, the tax exclusion. Trust that you've absorbed this. You now have the tools to navigate the test much more effectively.